I'd like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of Tuesday, October 1st, 2019, and the time is 10:01 a.m. First item is HCD updates. Ms. Ferriero.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Administration, and my colleagues. I'd like to say first and foremost, Happy New Year. Today is the first day of the fiscal year, so I couldn't think of a better time to be here in front of you, talking about HCD, some of the things that we have going on, and what we can expect in the next year or so. Before we get started, I'd just like to have our HCD staff, if you could stand up for a little bit, we have some folks here, and I'd like to really recognize them and give them a hand of applause.
No, Commissioner Rouse, that was not for you walking in.
I'd like to recognize our HCD staff. We are about to go through a lot of different variations of different projects and activities and initiatives that we have in HCD, and we have a very limited staff with very limited resources, but they are doing an incredible job, and I wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them, and I'm just really honored to be able to represent them and the work that they're doing. So, of course, when you think of housing and community development, the first thing that comes to mind, of course, is housing, and that's our primary mission. And so, we think about housing, of course, our main goal is to develop and preserve affordable or workforce housing. So, how do we do that? We have a variety of development loans that we provide to nonprofit and for-profit organizations to develop housing. We also provide, the city provides, development incentives in the form of waivers and/or expedited fees, I'm sorry, expedited permitting, and a variety of incentives to incentivize workforce and affordable housing. We have a residential rehabilitation program that provides home repair assistance up to $50,000 for eligible residents in the city of West Palm Beach. We have a home purchase assistance program that provides up to $60,000 for first, I'm sorry, for down payment and closing cost assistance. We have a tenant-based rental assistance program. This program is administered countywide. We receive about $3 million on an annual basis to provide tenant-based rental assistance to eligible households. We also have a pilot reentry program. This program is a partnership with other organizations such as The Lord's Place with Palm Beach County, and this program provides rental assistance up to a year for individuals who are exiting the criminal justice system. And the purpose of this program was to determine if stable housing has an effect on recidivism. Did I say that correctly? Because I always mess it up. Yes? Okay. We have a housing stabilization program. This program provides first and last month's rent to individuals who are homeless and/or individuals who are, were preventing them from becoming homeless. From a community development perspective, we provide funding for community development improvements, or community facility improvements, excuse me. We'll talk about some of those projects there. We provided funding for demolition and any infrastructure improvements that may be required in eligible areas of the city. Social and homeless services, that's a huge undertaking that HCD has. Of course, we provide all of the homeless outreach and case management services citywide. We'll talk a little bit more about that through our Vickers House Division. We have a Home Rebound Program, which provides a one-way ticket to homeless individuals who'd like to connect with their families in other areas of the country. Of course, our mobile health clinic, we have a clinic that is stationed in various areas of the city, particularly in Curry Park two times a week. They're also stationed in St. Anne two times a week, as well as The Lord's Place. We have a program, the Serving Our Seniors Program, which provides assistance to eligible seniors in West Palm Beach that may have some sort of hardship. We provide numerous referral services to various organizations, countywide, to individuals that may need services, and of course, we do a variety of community outreach and different initiatives throughout the city. One of the big things that HCD has taken over has been real estate management of all city-owned properties. So, that could mean, we have identified a majority, I'm sorry, numerous properties throughout the city that we have either sold or donated to nonprofit organizations for the development of housing. In the instances where we sold these properties, the funds generated from the sale have been put in the city's Housing Trust Fund for the development of affordable housing. One of the things that we also have is, we manage the city leases, all of the leases that the city currently has in place, we manage all of those as well. One of the things that we also don't often talk about, which is a majority of the work that we do in HCD, is of course, program administration. We oversee three federal funding programs, Home, CDPG, and HOPWA. We oversee a state program, the SHIP program, and we oversee the city's Housing Trust Fund and the city's Real Estate Management Fund. All of those have a completely different variations of what you can, what you can't do, very complicated programs to oversee. I've actually had a colleague of ours state that our business is one of the most complicated in the city, and I would tell you that, I wouldn't doubt that. We have a complex business, but we are happy to be able to provide that on behalf of the city.
Ms. Ferriero, could you briefly explain what home is, what HOPWA is, what SHIP is, just general overview of what those programs are? We hear those letters of alphabet thrown out a lot, but explain what they are.
So, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, that's one abbreviation, right? They provide funding to us under the Community Development Block Grant, that's the CDPG program, the Home Investments Partnership Program, that's the home program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, that is the HOPWA program. So, with CDPG, and we can do a separate work session where we'll go over what's eligible and what's not eligible under each of these funding sources. CDPG is one of the most flexible funding sources that we have. We can do housing, you can do social services, you can do community facility development, you can do economic development. So, there's a variety of different variations of what you can do utilizing CDPG funds. It's our most flexible funding source that we receive from the federal government. Our home program, that's more geared towards housing, right? And that's, again, it's still a federal program, and you can do housing construction, down payment assistance with it, you can do rental assistance with that funding source. And it's a little bit more stringent, but it's merely geared towards housing. Our HOPWA program, that is a program that we administer on a countywide basis, and that provides rental assistance to individuals with AIDS. And because we are the largest municipality in Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach, we are administered on behalf of the county. And then, of course, we have our SHIP program, that's a state program, and that is a State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program, and that's, again, geared more towards housing. You can do housing construction, housing development, you can do rehabilitation and down payment assistance.
Thank you.
Was that a good overview? Okay. So, I really want to talk to you about some of the great projects that we have underway, one of which is the Georgian Gardens Apartment. We broke ground on this project a year ago, and look where we are now. We are looking, hopefully, Mayor, to have a groundbreaking, I'm sorry, a ribbon cutting in December. That's what we're shooting for, latest in January. This project is a partnership with Urban Related, it's providing 87 units of affordable rental housing to seniors, and we've only provided a very small minimal investment, which was over $600,000, and probably some development incentives. And as a result, we will have 87 additional units for seniors in the city of West Palm Beach. Another project, which is our Assistant City Administrator, Armando Fana, he worked really hard on this project, so this is one of his favorites. It's an affordable rental housing project in the Northwood area, and it's going to be providing 36 units of affordable housing. We've invested $1.1 million of funding, plus some incentives. Again, we broke ground, I believe, Mayor, it was the day after you were selected, elected Mayor-elect, so that was the day of that groundbreaking, and look, here we are, September 2019. Look how much progress we've made in that project, and we are hoping to have the project CO'd sometime in January.
Before you go off of that, what impact, hopefully, there'll be no impact, but Jerome Golden, I guess, is in some financial distress, so would that have any impact on this project?
And no, I mean, there's going to be a transition plan, and we'll be working with Jerome Golden to see how that's going to go over the next five years, but, you know, this project, we're, it's a tax credit project, so it has restrictions for 15 years where it has to remain affordable. So, we'll have to work those details out with Jerome Golden.
Thank you.
The Home at Tamarind Project, this is a project off on Tamarind Avenue. It's a partnership with Gulfstream Goodwill, and it is providing six units of affordable housing for individuals with special needs. We provided some land donations, a small minimal investment of $250,000, and we are hoping that this project would be completed late this year, beginning of next year. And again, you see just how much progress has been made over the last six months or so. The Arts on Broadway Project, this is a workforce and affordable rental housing project off on Broadway. It is a partnership with Crisis Housing Solutions. We are providing a loan, hopefully, should City Commission approve this loan, in the amount of $300,000. We've donated the land and some incentives, and it's going to result in 52 units of affordable rental housing in our city. Mary Place Estates, this is a project where we provided $605,000 in investments. It is a partnership with the Housing Authority, which consists of four single-family homes and 12 townhomes. The townhomes is also a partnership with Polte Homes. The development of that has been somewhat delayed, so Armando wants to say something.
Just to clarify, it's actually 12 single-family homes and 36 townhomes.
Okay, there we go. Thank you for that, I don't know how I missed that, but, and four of those homes have already been developed, so they should have, we should have a CO in November of next month, actually. One of the things that we do, you often hear us a lot, what we do is donating land to nonprofit organizations. Under construction now or under development, we have about 19 additional lots that are being developed in our city, and this is through partnerships with Habitat for Humanity and Neighborhood Renaissance. The CRA has also donated lots to these organizations so they can develop affordable housing. Oftentimes, we provide incentives for this project, for these projects, and of course, some home funding. Some additional projects that we have underway, we have two small projects with the Ark of Palm Beach County. They provide supportive housing to elderly individuals with special needs. We're going to be doing some rehabilitation in their current site at 322 10th Street. This is a historic structure that needs some work. They are on a very limited budget, so we're going to be providing some funds to do some rehabilitation on that site. And of course, a few weeks, few months ago, you approved the donation of a property on Manning Avenue, and they're going to be developing a brand-new structure, very similar concept to the one on 10th Street, and that's going to house an additional six units of affordable housing. One of the projects I'm particularly very excited about, it's the redevelopment of 1600 North Australian Avenue. That location currently houses the Sickle Cell Foundation. We have already selected a contractor that's going to demolish the structure, and we are already working with procurement to procure services for an architect to design this facility. This is also going to house a new Vickers House facility, and the way that we, our vision, is that it would be a hub, where we, a community resource center slash hub, where we will have multiple nonprofits in that area, in that location, excuse me, to provide a variety of services to our community. And we are, we're hoping that project will be completed in spring 2021. South Olive Tennis Center renovations, we're working with engineering on this project. We've allocated some federal CDPG dollars to that project. Hopefully, the tennis center renovations will be completed October of 2020.
When do you expect those to begin?
The South Olive?
Yes.
It's currently underway. I just got an update this morning, and this is the new timeframe, that it would be completed in October of 2020. So, what do we have underway? We have a variety of initiatives surrounding the development and preservation of affordable and workforce housing. Of course, we're prioritizing our partnership with RISE on a variety of programs and resources. We've donated some land to RISE, again, for that Manning Property Avenue that was donated to RISE. We're going to be setting aside some funding for down payment and closing cost assistance in that area, so we're working with various organizations on the RISE initiative. There is another project, The Grand at Rosemary Ave. I know most of you have heard it, it's going to provide 287 units of work, and 190 of those will be workforce housing units in the historic Northwest. This is a $70 million investment. We're working with affiliated development, and of course, with the Community Redevelopment Agency. You will have future discussions on that project, but that's something that HCD is supporting. The Macy's Site, we've set aside some units for affordable, I'm sorry, for workforce housing. We're partnering with Related Group on that, so you expect to see that in the forthcoming months. The Avernia Site, this is a city-owned property here in downtown. Our goal is to develop a mixed-income housing project, again, in downtown. We're going to be putting it out to bid, selecting a developer, and someone to work with us on this project. We're having multiple discussions with various developers citywide on how can we partner to set aside units for affordable or workforce housing. So, that's a discussion that we're currently having. I'll tell you this, some developers have made contributions to our Housing Trust Fund in lieu of providing workforce housing on their sites, so that funding could be utilized for all of these other workforce housing projects that we have underway. Come, I'm sorry, come sometime November, December of this year, we're going to reopen our residential rehabilitation program. We currently have an RFP out to select a nonprofit partner that would partner with us to administer this program, so there's quite some interest from our nonprofit organizations, and we're also going to reopen our home purchase assistance program. From the homeless.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
We have a question from Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, and thank you, on your last slide, on the side, working with things like the RISE initiative and referring to developers submitting dollars into the Housing Trust Fund, is there a way, I know during strategic planning, we had talked about looking at the inventory of houses that we have that could be rehabilitated, could we potentially put that into a program that's a bit more organized, where we had neighbors that were volunteering to kind of take a look at what the inventory is we have in abandoned homes, homes that are ready for demolishing and, you know, rebuild, as well as just some that need some rehab, so that we can take that existing inventory of homes and rehab those? And I understand, it sounds like we have pockets and semblances of that program, but I guess I would leave to administration and to HCD to say, you know, can we partner with the neighborhoods in some way to try to put that into a formal program of identifying what that inventory is so that we can address it?
Right, so that's part of the workforce housing ordinance that we're working on with Development Services. So, what that would state, that in lieu of a developer providing, let's state, workforce or affordable housing on their site, they would be a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, and we would use those dollars for, and then we're trying to establish what that would be used for, and one of the criterias, or one of the things that we're going to use it for is to provide some sort of, you know, looking at our housing stock and how can we better and preserve our housing stock. So, that is something that we're considering as we develop that program.
Can I just?
Yes.
Just add to that, working with the RISE initiative, they're actually going, they're doing surveys of households, they're going, they're knocking on doors, so one of the things that we're doing, well, as we're working with the RISE initiative, and that includes multiple neighborhoods in the north end, is then trying to identify the individuals who most need rehab, and then targeting those. So, there is, there is a method with, in terms of how we're working with RISE and identifying those particular homes.
Great, and thank you for that, and I think those existing homeowners are a keen focus that we should be looking at, but I think to take that to the next level is looking at those, we have a lot of homes that have been inherited, where families don't live in the area anymore, and so what happens is they tend to be run down and dilapidated, so if we could be proactive in reaching out and saying, hey, look, we have a program by which you can get this property back up, rehabbed, and potentially owned by someone else, or come up with a method to make sure that that property still does not take the other neighboring properties, become a nuisance, reduce their property value, et cetera.
You make, absolutely. One of the reasons, partly, one of the reasons why we're partnering with a local nonprofit is so that they can do that, because we do have our residential rehabilitation program. Again, we're putting that out to partner with a nonprofit, so they can do that outreach, they can knock door-to-door and state, hey, this is a program that you may be able to utilize, so not just on the RISE area, but also citywide and other areas in our community.
However, what you're saying would take a change in our strategy, because we, right now, we only do owner-occupy. What you're talking about is non-owner-occupied. This is either a house that was inherited, it's abandoned, or it's not occupied at the moment, so that would take a, we would have to change our strategy to do that, that we've submitted to the state.
I guess I would, I would ask that we look at that in addition to, because I think the work you're doing now is great, but if we could find a way to look at that in addition to everything that you're looking at owner-occupied, I think that would be beneficial.
Absolutely.
The other thing I'd like to see you work on, I know we're updating our website, and it would be great if somewhere, and you could work with the website designers, if people could just click a button on our website and see exactly the projects that HCD is doing, so that will provide, I mean, this information is so good and it's so helpful, but we don't do a good job of tooting our own horn about all of the projects that we're engaged in. And so, one of the things I'd love to see, and not just for HCD, but for other departments, when they have ongoing projects, is somehow have the website designed in such a way that people can easily access that information by going to the website. So, Kathleen, I know you're somewhere, whoever's designing it, let's get that word to the website designers, so that will help us tell our story to our residents.
So, on the homeless and social service realm, we are continuing, of course, our outreach to the homeless, and we haven't, we're working to enhance our partnerships. So, currently, the city and the DDA, we have two separate contracts for homeless outreach with The Lord's Place. So, we're like, why do we have to have two separate contracts for the same service? So, the DDA and the city, we're coming together to put one pot of funding together, so we can contract with The Lord's Place to provide, I'm sorry, outreach to our homeless populations. One of the things that we asked The Lord's Place to look at is to partner with the Mental Health Association of Palm Beach County. We had a great meeting for them to incorporate a mental health component into their outreach. That could be, we're waiting for the proposal, but that could be either having a caseworker that does on-street outreach that has that mental health background, or an LCSW, so including that as a part of our outreach. We're working to enhance our program in that way. We're also finalizing a reporting tool for the public, where they can report homeless activity that would come to the city, and we would be able to address whatever concerns they may have and follow up with them. So, we're working with GIS to provide that in the forthcoming month or so. From a real estate management perspective, we continue to identify city-owned, city properties that we can, in essence, sell or donate to nonprofit organizations for development of housing. We are also going to bring forward to you a lease management policy. The city currently has about 20, 30 leases, and we're hoping that this lease management policy provides a framework for how we administer and enter into leases, not just the ones that we currently have, but any future negotiations moving forward. We're also going to be evaluating and monitoring all of our leases, just to make sure that we're all in compliance, and that everyone is adhering to the terms and conditions of those leases. And of course, our administrative functions, we have a huge workload coming ahead in that realm, the development of our workforce housing ordinance, we're working with Development Services Commissioner Shoff. So, we'll be presenting that to you in the forthcoming months. We have our five-year HUD consolidated plan, that is a lot of work in terms of collecting data, and in kind of developing a framework for how we're going to allocate our resources in the city of West Palm Beach over the next five years. That's a lot of public outreach, a lot of working with local organizations, with the community, just to state, these are our needs, this is where we need to go in the next five years. And then, of course, our annual action plan, that's a part of our five-year consolidated plan, that's all due to HUD, August 15th of next year, so you're going to see a lot of that, and we're going to be taking a lot of feedback from the people in this room and from the members of our community. And so, that concludes my presentation of what HCD currently has and what we're working over the next 12 months, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioners? Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. What an amazing and comprehensive presentation, I appreciate that, and it seems like we are doing a lot in the city, so Mayor, I echo your comments about making sure that our residents realize all of the resources that are available, whether that's through our website or other communication methods. I have two questions. One, a very detailed question is, can you talk a little bit about the evaluation and monitoring, or the management of the workforce housing that we're, you know, supporting, requiring, requesting, whether it's in development that the developers put in, or that we're helping to fund? And then, my second question is, you know, how are we doing citywide as it relates to workforce and affordable housing? I mean, we definitely hear that this is an issue statewide, throughout the country, but it seems like we have a lot of great projects, but I'd like to know, is this just a scratch in the surface for West Palm Beach, or is this really making a dent?
Excellent. Okay, so to answer your first question, as it relates to monitoring, so anytime whether we give $5, or whether we give $1 million, right, we have requirements set forth by either our federal funding sources or our state funding sources, that these projects have to remain affordable for a specific period of time. It could be anywhere from 15 to 20 years, right? So, what do we do? We put, of course, a restriction on the property, right, which would indicate that X amount of units would have to remain affordable for X, Y, and Z timeframe. So, what are we required to do? We're required to, on an annual basis, go out and monitor each agency or each developer so that it could, to indicate or to show that they are meeting the requirements of the agreement that we have in place. So, what we do is, of course, we do a desk audit, review all of their rent rolls, we'll go out there and review their income certification, making sure that the people that they're putting into these housing units meet the specific income criteria. We go in and we inspect the units, making sure that they're habitable, right? You've received assistance, are the units habitable? So, we have to do that on an annual basis. And then, of course, for our local funds, which is funds that we establish, you know, our regulations, we establish our own local laws, we try to mirror the same policies that the state or the federal government put in place. So, it's very comprehensive, and I'll tell you, the more units we develop, the more we have to monitor, so that's where a lot of our efforts are going to be going into. And I know we talk a lot about development, 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 but we don't often talk about preservation, and making sure that we preserve these units so that they maintain affordability for the specific timeframe. That's just as important as it is to continuing to develop newer units. Does that answer your first question?
Yes.
All right, so going on to the second one, which was related to, wait, refresh my memory.
The bigger picture.
There we go, the bigger picture. So, I want to say, over the last five, four years, we've developed over 500 units of affordable housing throughout our city, which is a significant amount. And when I say "we," I don't only mean the city, I mean the West Palm Beach Housing Authority, we're talking also about Habitat for Humanity, we're talking about Neighborhood Renaissance, we're talking about, you know, nonprofit organizations that come in and do tax credit deals in the city. So, 500, I'm sorry, 500 affordable housing units in the last five years, that's a significant amount given. Is there still a shortage? Absolutely. We still have to continue to seek more funding and look for more opportunities where we can continue to provide affordable housing, and of course, preserve them. Remember that we have affordability periods, 15, 20 years. After 15 or 20 years, those properties could essentially become market rate. So, we keep producing, right, but we have to make sure that we focus on preservation as well. So, is there definitely a need? Yes, I can tell you that, I'm looking at Lisa Kim from Vickers House, and the struggle is, how do we house individuals, right? We have stagnant incomes who have fixed incomes, how do we house them when one-bedroom rents are going for, you know, 11, 1200? If that's all you're making on a monthly basis, how do you house these individuals? So, you know, the, we're making a significant impact on that, I believe that we still need to continue on this route. It's an ongoing issue that we have throughout our city, throughout the nation, but I am confident in saying that the city, we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have other questions?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, obviously, lots of great things are happening. I think I know the answers to this question, but I feel the need to ask it. When we surplus or give property, city-owned property to nonprofits.
Correct.
Do we ensure, as the homes are being constructed, for example, many decades, maybe at least a decade ago, I know that infill homes were built, and I don't know all the particulars, but in the historic Northwest, with no back doors. Obviously, that happened before this, you know, several commissions ago, several administrations ago. I don't see how that happened, but it did. Do we ensure that issues like that, you know, are, you know, as these folks are constructing these homes, still needs to be a home, and a home with one entrance, just my opinion, is no good. Can you talk a little bit about that, how we monitor that, or do we have a role in that as a city, if we're surplusing the?
Of course, absolutely. We're giving the land, we have, say, in the design of the properties. So, we have criteria, development criteria in our contracts of how they have to develop these, you know, these units, and so that's stated in the contracts. And of course, when we go out and we monitor the properties while they're in construction, we verify that these, you know, that there's certain design standards that are incorporated.
Can I assume we would not support homes being built with no back doors?
I, does that even meet Florida Building Code? I'm not even sure.
They exist in historic Northwest, plenty of them. And again, that's not throwing stones, it's just, I wanted to call that out, I think it's important, so I'm assuming, I thought I knew the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain that it's not the case with any of the properties that we're working on.
Jennifer, one question I have, are we looking into? Jennifer, one, uh, question I have. Are we looking into any kind of, uh, uh, rent, uh, control or stabilization, uh, situ-, in, in other words? W- w- we have in some neighborhoods, some, some homes will probably need multifamily units, will probably need work, et cetera. In exchange for bringing those up to code, um, do we have, have we thought about any plans whereby for a period of time, the rates, the rental rates would stay the same in exchange for, I don't know, if it be tax abatement or something? So that we, and this goes to your, um, your, your, your thought about continuing to have a sustainable supply of affordable, uh, housing options in certain neighborhoods. So I, I know in other cities, uh, they will incentivize an owner of a multifamily unit to, to make certain improvements, uh, but they extract from that owner a promise that for a period of time, ten years, fifteen years, the rents will not exceed a certain amount. So we could continue to have upgraded housing in, in, in those areas, uh, modified, uh, housing in those areas. But, you know, with that, it would be an assurance that we would continue to have some affordable, uh, housing options there. Have we looked at anything like that?
Yes. So anytime we give any, any funding, right, especially for either development or preservation of, of housing, right? There are certain rent restrictions. So based on that person's income, there are certain maximums of what they can pay towards rent. So that's part of our, of our, uh, monitoring, when we go out and making sure that the rents don't exceed a certain threshold, right? So we have that in place. One of the things that has happened in the past and why we have to be careful with that is we have worked with various landlords, right, that don't necessarily understand the requirements of what they're signing up for, for the next fifteen years. They don't understand that they have to certify that person's income, right? They don't understand that, hey, for the next fifteen years, you can't exceed these rents, right? So we want to make sure that the people that, or the organizations that we partner with have experience in affordable housing. We've done it with, with, you know, landlords throughout the city and it's really caused us a headache, Mayor. And so we, we want to be cautious of who we partner. But yes, that is the, the, anytime we do any sort of rental, we have those restrictions. Um, and, and unfortunately, or fortunately, we, um, are expend-, we have expended a lot of our local funds, our, our state and, and federal funds for rental housing. So our, we have a shortage of that. So we're hoping to find some mechanisms to get additional funding so we can continue to do that.
I further add to that, because we really want to leverage the private sector funds as much as possible as well. And, and as, as Jennifer said, in the past, before us, we were, we were subsidizing slum lords in many cases.
Yeah.
Um, and so we want to be careful with that. And as an example, there's a project right now, that's the, the income restrictions, elderly project. Income restrictions that HUD had in place have expired. It was a forty-year requirement. It needs substantial rehabilitation. So we're working with the owner of that project, the housing authority and us to try to leverage as much as we can and help preserve that project. It's two hundred units of elderly housing. That could easily go away. So that's an example of a lot of bang for our buck that we're going to target.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much for that fine presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item two, discussion of artificial turf regulations. Mr. Green?
Yes. Mayor, before we leave housing, real quickly, I just wanted to mention, we've been working a lot with HCD and Jennifer and Armando. Um, we made two applications to the Urban Land Institute. If you're familiar with them, they are a national organization. Um, so we made two applications for something called our Leadership Project. And the Leadership Project is basically, they provide us expertise on any scenario we desire. So we made two applications, they accepted one. And the one we were seeking was assistance in coming up with housing incentives and initiatives as part of the, my chair is sinking.
You want to know why?
I, I know why, Mayor. You don't have to tell me. But anyway, we were fortunate to just get an engagement letter that law is looking at now. So, um, their experts in the field are going to be working closely with us and trying to come up with incentives of some of the things that Commissioner Shof mentioned, we've been discussing for some time. But we're going to tap into this expertise, no charge to the city. Um, so law is looking at that now, but I'm excited.
Great news, thank you.
They can help us with that. But getting on to artificial turf, um, for some of the, uh, the newer commissioners, this was a discussion, um, that we had, um, to a great extent, a couple of years ago. We had workshops with both our planning board, we had workshops with the city commission, and we even had workshops with the city sustainability committee. Um, so we've asked, uh, the commissioners asked to get an update. So, um, I've asked Ray, who sat through a lot of those discussions along with myself and my staff, um, as well as Penny Redford and her staff, to just provide a quick update as to where we are now and what we've been doing with regard to artificial turf. So, Ray.
Good morning. Ray Curancy, landscape planner and planning. Um, artificial turf update. The changes to the code were part of the second round of the landscape code amendments to address specific areas of the code. This was in, um, early in two thousand eighteen, that the second round of, of changes were proposed. Workshops were held on June twenty-eighth and July nineteenth of two thousand seventeen with landscape architects and other interested parties for the landscape code changes. Draft language was recorded at that time, uh, from the, those recommendations. Sustainability Advisory Committee met on both occasions to discuss and hear from interested parties and residents regarding artificial turf. Recommendations were issued by the committee and it was quite a, an interesting discussion between both sides of pro and against artificial turf. Uh, code revision case seventeen eleven went to the planning board as a workshop item on, in October of two thousand seventeen. And as a recommendation item on November twenty-first of seventeen, um, the board recommended approval seven to zero with some changes. And this was bundled with many of the other changes to the landscape code at that point. Um, ordinance forty-seven fifty-six dash seventeen went to the city commission for first reading, uh, in January of two thousand eighteen. There was discussion and changes were requested for second reading, uh, especially with, some with the artificial turf code. Second reading was on April eleventh, um, and it was approved five to zero by the commission at that time with some changes. So here is the current code as it stands, which defines the areas where artificial turf can be used. Um, and they are the construction of non-city-owned athletic fields and playgrounds associated with a non-city-owned community center, park, school, or university as part of the construction of any non-residential development on rooftop terraces, on residential lots in the rear setback and side setback, or in multifamily residential developments as part of a, a recreation or amenity area. And in all of these cases, uh, the, any non-city-owned athletic fields, the first part there uh, requires, uh, approval by the city commission. So it has, is a class A, um, special use. So it has to come to the commission for approval. In all areas of installation, artificial turf shall be treated as impervious surface area. Quantity, uh, is limited then on a project by the amount of impervious area that is, that is allowed. There's limitations on that. With the exception of the, those circumstances in which artificial turf is installed, uh, in, in a class A, artificial turf shall not be a part of any landscape buffers required by this article and visible from a road or street. And it cannot be installed within permanent drainage features such as ponds or swales. Um, then there's a list of, of minimum material standards that have to be checked and have to be met with each application. I won't go through all those unless you've got some questions. And then installation, maintenance, repair. Um, these are standards saying that it has to be maintained, it has to be kept in good condition. And, um, going forward, uh, throughout that. And it also is, um, required to have a permit to install artificial turf. So that's how it stands now. Are there any specific questions?
Any questions? I don't know who brought this up, but any questions, concerns? Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I had some questions regarding residents who had come to the commission meetings recently about this. And so I don't know, is artificial turf significantly less expensive than sod? Is it, you know?
It, it's, I think it's more expensive. And the big debate we had probably two, two and a half years ago was particularly with regard to residential districts. And the bulk, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, but the bulk of the discussion was, do we allow it in the front setback? And at the time, the commission said, we will allow it on the side and rear, um, but we did not want it, allow it in the front setback, the first typically twenty-five feet of the front setback. We have had, I think, three people that have put artificial, installed artificial turf, um, without a permit. They simply did it on their own. They were cited. Um, so we tried to make it very clear that it has to be in the side and rear only.
And I know in the past, some have suggested their kids had allergies to grass or something and, uh, use that as a reason why they wanted to have artificial turf.
Well, I appreciate the education and the background on this is, um, very helpful.
Okay, anything else on this? All right, thank you very much. Good presentation. Thank you. Okay, item three, uh, presentation on the West Palm Beach pavement conditions index. Lynn?
Hi, good morning. Um, so we're here to talk about the roadway resurfacing program that, um, uh, we issue every year. And, um, I just want to give a brief history of where we were at five years ago and where we're at today. Um, I was actually hired specifically by the city of West Palm Beach to run the roadway resurfacing program of the, and the, um, the grants program itself. So in two thousand thirteen, we, uh, we used, um, this company, ZTS, that, um, you know, ride and drive around the entire city and look at, um, the condition of our roadways. And what they use is this vehicle, as you see here, and, um, you know, with, um, photographs. They take photographs every twenty-five feet or so. And with that, uh, with very complicated algorithm, they were able to give us a pavement condition index. So, um, the index right here is, um, was developed by the, the, um, the US Army Corps. It is, um, nationally recognized. And if you can think about it, if you're taking a test, a seventy is a passing grade, anything below that is not desirable. So back in two thousand thirteen, our average, citywide, we have about two hundred and sixty miles of roadway that we manage, um, is about sixty-four, um, point one, which is, uh, failing in our. So in the past, uh, four or five years, we've been working really, really hard to get it to jump up, uh, double-digit at seventy-seven. And, um, how are we able to accomplish that? And it really comes down to four different strategies here. Um, the first one is, uh, the right-way permits requirement. And for example, uh, you know, if a utilities project were to come in and, uh, they trench the road, it's our requirements for them to resurface a fifty feet on either side, so a hundred linear feet. This is common practice among, um, Palm Beach County and other cities also. The other thing is, uh, when we work with developers that come in and restore, uh, to restore our, our right-of-way. If they are, for example, uh, the Broadstone right here, as they come in, we work with them to mill and resurface the entire stretch of the block as they are taking up the, the entire block. Um, we coordinate with, uh, utilities quite a bit. It used to be, um, utilities does their own project and engineering does our own roadway resurfacing project. Now we try the best we can, and I'll go into those details to marry the two. And then ultimately, uh, our resurfacing program, and I'll go into how much we have every year and how we're able to, um, accomplish that. So about four or five years ago, uh, we received, um, what we received was a report and it ranked from worst to best. Um, now we change our process a little bit. We ask them, give us the database, you know? Uh, we are visual people. And so what we've done is very similar to the color code, as you see here, uh, from, uh, green to gray. Uh, we get color-coded the entire database, um, online. And with that, we look at, uh, when we have it in a GIS and Geo spatial layer, we look at other, um, policies or other plans that we have. For example, where are the bus stops? How, what about access and traffic data and all that? So with that, um, you know, how we program a project, it comes to, um, three major components. The first one is utilities infrastructures. And what we look at, and we do this in coordination with the utilities department. If you have a project within the five-year program, it does not make it on the list because it becomes, you know, you don't want to resurface a road and the next thing you know, a couple of years later, you have to dig it up and do all again. The other thing is access itself. And when we look at access, we look at, um, is it a major collector road north-south? Or does it cross the train track? Because those roads and those streets carry the most people. And so we tend, tend to prioritize those area. Um, and then ultimately, um, you know, our focus area is a pavement condition index or a fifty or below, uh, because right now, we still have a significant amount of infrastructures that's below fifty, and that's where we're targeting. And then ultimately, uh, you know, uh, we look at what is the worst to best. And as we're doing our roadway resurfacing, we try to tackle some other federal mandates. For example, if you are to resurface a road, uh, FHWA requires you to upgrade all your crosswalks and ADA access at the intersection. So a project that is traditionally resurfacing is not just resurfacing, it's a lot more. So how much do we have a year? Um, so as you know, uh, gas tax is increasingly decreasing. It's, um, you know, cars are more effective, people are driving more electric vehicles, our, our tax dollars are going down as far as how we resurface projects. So when we look at it and, um, you know, how, how does a project become a project? We look at, for example, I'll give you a quick example of Parker Avenue itself. As you can see, um, there are quite a little bit of pink and red section that's failing, but it is our major collector road. So we turned that into a true corridor, um, project. And we looked at other programs such as grant programs and something else that we can turn that into a project. So, and then the other thing is like Bunker Road. As you can see, it's, um, it crosses the railroad, uh, even though not all sections are bad, but there is a very important access, uh, you know, that we're trying to solve with that. And so Bunker, eventually, not in this program, but it will become a project. And then ultimately, this is the list that we publish and, um, you know, we're looking to publish this on our website as we're moving forward, just to let everybody know where are, um, the segments that we're targeting. And so as you can see, right, this year, we only have two and a half million dollars. And one million of it is already committed to a utilities project. Again, we try to work with the utilities department to make sure our program's whole. So with that, it, it's averaged out about one and a half million per year that we have to resurface. So we're very, very challenged on how we, uh, we have to, uh, keep up with our road infrastructures. So what do we do? Um, so in the past five years, we've been very aggressive as far as like, how can we target grant projects and how do we make our project whole and complete? And as you can see here, um, this is a list of all the projects that's in the current, um, Palm Beach TPA, um, tip right now. And we receive, um, very generously, over forty-six million dollars in the past five years. And thirty-eight of that million actually goes towards roadway resurfacing. And, um, from that is a very brief overview of our resurfacing program this year.
Quick question. Uh, you mentioned we have about one point five, uh, a year to spend. And that's probably going to decline with gas taxes declining. What is our annual need? What's the delta?
Um, quite a bit. So, um, I, a few years ago, I did a very brief analysis on, let's say if we were to resurface every single road and each road has a twenty-year lifespan, we need about eighteen million dollars a year to keep up with our infrastructures.
A year?
Yes.
Uh, and it sounds like you've done a great job with the grants, which is, which is wonderful. But I think the challenge before us, commissioners, and then again, as we go into strategic planning, uh, this is something that we need to have, uh, top of mind. Uh, th- these are some basic infrastructure needs. You're going to get the emails. We're already getting emails about, uh, paving. And, uh, we've got a significant, uh, delta between what we have available and what those needs are. So, uh, as we engage in strategic planning discussions later this year, we need to keep that in mind. Commissioner, you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, for the presentation. So a quick question. I, I thought at one time, we had, just going back a couple of years, the roads were tiered. And maybe that's still the case. So tier one, tier two. So for example, if I'm in a community meeting and someone says, you know, Village Boulevard, you know, we're, we're having to, um, you know, address potholes every, you know, three or four months, I was able to say, you know, listen, basically the way that you've explained it, that we've gone through, we've done an assessment. Um, and Village Boulevard is tier three, which is, you know, as it lines up now, is, I'm just throwing this out, three years from now is when we're, we're thinking about that. Is that old antiquated information? Not in terms of where it tiers, but are we using that language? Because that, we do get that question quite often when we're out in the community.
Right. We, we do get that questions a lot because, um, you know, it's- Right. We do get that questions a lot because, you know, it's, because people who are living along these segments, that's personal to them. It's, it's very challenging for us to tackle like that. You know, for example, I don't want to pick Village Boulevard, but Village Boulevard has four lanes and it's an average condition between segment to segment. So even though there are certain area that need to be addressed, as far as, I believe it's like the northbound outside lanes, we may be able to look at it from a different program because we have, this is purely gas tax 101 tax program that we have. And we have to address it from worst to best. There are maybe some other programs. And that's why I, you know, I focus more on corridor and how do we improve safety along the corridor? Because when we talk about safety, there are other pots of dollars that we tapped into. Like Vision Zero, we can do more safety improvements to look at traffic calming along there. And when we do that, we try to leverage, if we can resurface these areas, to make the programs whole. You know, a lot of time, like all these projects right here that's highlighted in red, every single one of them are complete streets projects. And Federal Highway, you know, Florida being the most dangerous for pedestrian bicyclists, they always target these type of programs. So we have to talk about safety and we have to, and that's how we're able to leverage other programs to bring back resurfacing. Because if we purely talk about resurfacing, we have to approach it in a very equitable way, and that's from worst to best. I can give you a brief example here. Flagler Promenade South, it's a, it's a small T intersection south. You know, for this project, it's a dead end, it doesn't carry a lot of traffic. But if you look at the pavement condition index along there, it's 28 out of 100. It's something that we can't ignore. So eventually, you know, these sections will make it on the list. But we try to, when we try to look at road resurfacing, we try to look at a more inclusive perspective so we can gain more access for people in the community.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Two questions. First one fairly simple. On the index map that you had posted, is there a place where citizens can go on and look at that? To Commissioner Ring's point, we do get this question a lot and it's helpful to be able to point to something to say, you know, here's your condition as it relates to the entire city. So is there a map somewhere?
It is. There is a map and we can release it. But I just want you to know that when we release, release a very big map of the entire city, we're going to be scrutinized on, you know, section, for example, there is a little section right here that's a dead end. And somebody's going to say, why isn't my dead-end street being resurfaced? And we have to explain, again, because of these three criterias. Yes, we have it actually released. I can post a link on the engineering website so anybody could take a look at it. If it's a desire of the mayor and the city commission for us to do that. But we're going to open up a little bit of a gateway wormhole to a lot of other questions.
Well, as long as we are armed with the information you just gave us. I mean, dead-end streets are a lower priority and, you know, whatever the factors, whatever the additional factors are that enter into the decision, and I don't know if there's a way to post that information as well. But it's transparency, more transparency, the better.
Well, if I may, I was going to suggest that we do just that. That we post what our criteria is so there's no misunderstanding.
Exactly.
Because we can't just go from the lowest to the highest because of all these other criteria that we have to evaluate. So I, you know, something along those lines, if we could repackage this and, and make it a part of whatever posting we do on pavement condition.
Yeah, and that's something that even when we do the redesign of the website, we want to make sure we have available. And I don't know if we can, but I'm asking that we be able to zoom in so that people can zoom in over a certain area and highlight it and, you know, get that kind of feedback.
The website is essentially set up so that you can click on neighborhood boundaries and you can click on the commission districts. And, you know, there's other plans that we have digitized. So this past year, we've digitized almost all the information we have.
Excellent.
And so other people can look at other plans as well.
Excellent.
My, my second question is along those same lines of, of the transparency and kind of understanding the process. You put up your whole list of projects from the TPA. And in District One in particular, the North Flagler Drive project has come up a number of times that it was on the TPA list back in 2008 and is no longer on the list. How did these projects get on this list and how were they prioritized? If you could walk us through that just to understand.
Sure, sure. Obviously, the list that is published here is directly pulled, extracted from the current 2019 list that the TPA has there on their website, and they digitize that also. How these projects get on here, we do have a grant policy that we have to follow. As in, when we developed a project, it has to go through this level of analysis. We have to develop a green sheet, a CIP Capital Improvement Plan sheet. We have to get buy-ins from finance, because there's always matched dollars to something like that. And engineering and also, and from our attorneys. We have to present it to the city commission, we have to get a resolution, and then the mayor can sign off on the application for us to take it to the TPA. Then we participate, and a couple of members from this commission sits on the TPA board, ranked it. And then ultimately, a very long while later, we get a letter that says, congratulations, your project is now programmed. It could be funded or not funded, but it is on the list. And that's, it's probably a 10-step process for us to get there. But every year, we look at, you know, leveraging our dollars and see how we can bring back resurfacing dollars when we do these projects, just because of the shortfall that we have.
And understanding you weren't, you weren't part of the issue that, that happened in 2008, so you couldn't speak for sure on that specific. Have you ever seen a project come off of this list? And what is the process by which that, that project comes off the list? And West Palm Beach is notified or citizens are notified that that project is no longer being funded by the TPA?
Right. If, for example, if now we go through that process and we have the desire to take the project off the list, we actually have to go back to city commission to reprioritize, you know, how, why, why are we doing this? And really fully explain if, why is there a need for us to take a project off? And it has, it's, it's very tough for us because we have to justify the safety need every time we do a project on a transportation plan. And, you know, I, I believe there's safety needs everywhere, so.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me the timeframe of all these projects? Is this, the, the next slide that you were just on, the TPA projects?
Yeah, obviously, when we look at our capital plan itself in general, and these are all the projects that is included or will be included as part of the plan. Typically, it's a five-year plan because this follows the, you know, Florida Department of Transportation. FDOT itself administered some of these projects or managed the grant program. Because right now, the grant program is completely out of the engineering department as far as we're responsible to engineer and certify that these are, you know, constructable. But each one of these are in a five-year plan right now. I can tell you, on the last ADA updates, it's a project that we received a grant about four years ago. And it's, right now, we just opened bid, so we're about to award to a contractor and go into construction. So we try to stagger it so that every year we have a grant project. If not, it's, becomes overwhelming as far as like the demand on staff time.
Gotcha. So I was just doing a little bit of math in my head. And so if, if this is $38,000 that you're saying went towards resurfacing over five years, so $7,000, $8,000 plus the 1.5, I'm sorry, million dollars, plus the 1.5 that we're putting in ourselves, it's still less than $10 million that we're putting towards resurfacing. And if I recall, you said, we have a need of about 18 million, just to keep up.
Just to keep up, yes. And that is if we want our, our roads to be the best, right? And I know that there are some potholes in the area. But as far as our road infrastructure being a 77 out of 100, it's, it's actually, we're ranked very high among other cities of our size. Yes, there's always going to be a need. And I, you know, we, internally, we talked about like, how can we keep up with that demand? And how do we leverage? And, you know, of course, grants is one of those things. The other thing that we're doing is, you know, we look at, how do we design our roadway differently? For example, if we have a new project now, we tend to, a lot of it, we tend to cut in curbs. There's no curb and gutter. So we tried to do curb and gutter as part of that project. Yes, it might be a very expensive initial investment. But like, without water just sitting there and saturating to the pavement, we can restore and preserve it a little bit better. The other thing is, you know, when we have new projects, and you'll hear this, and even though it's not as popular, but we do try to work with a smaller typical section. And because it's overall, you know, 20 years from now, if you have less to maintain, it's actually a resiliency in sustainability that we have to target. So where we can, you know, those are the strategy that we're targeting.
Any other questions? Yeah, commissioners.
I'm fairly simple. So the, the projects that are in red are, those are ones that are getting ready to be done now, correct?
The project that's in red is getting some level of resurfacing and reconstruction. The project that's not in red, for example, Roosevelt State sidewalks, those are essentially sidewalk connection. And that project is specifically only target crosswalk and getting people across the street.
Okay. So is there a document that has all projects in progress?
Yes. Our, you know, Kevin's here. I can tell you that Tinu from our office, which is, she's our capital improvement manager, CIP manager, there is an ongoing list. I can tell you that about five years ago, when I joined the city, we have about five to eight transportation. This is only transportation project that we're talking, talking about. Right now, our next five years, we're targeting about 120 projects in our program. And that's only one program that we're targeting.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
And so do you have it such that, you know, Street B is going to start December 2022? Is it, is it calendared out like that? Because that would help me when I go to these meetings and they say, well, you know, when are they going to ever get to my street? And I can just pull it out and say, well, December.
I'm going to have to defer to Kevin on that one. Because I know that our CIP website is more high-scale and high-level. When we're about to start construction, that's when we really were more present in the neighborhood to let them know when, when and where.
Go back to your slide that shows the projects we're going to do next year with the gas tax. Okay, so this list of projects that Wen has presented here, to utilize the million and a half dollars that we have in funding from the gas tax, this is, these are all going to be implemented next year, okay? Those grant projects that she listed, the ones that were highlighted in red, you know, it's $38 million, but it's not entirely just for resurfacing roads. There's other components to that, which are probably the most expensive part of that, or one, you know, a great portion of that. So we also have a sales tax fund for citywide roadway improvements that we're incorporating into various projects. And we haven't identified all of those yet. We've only funded probably about maybe $3 or $4 million were the things to do under that program. But over the course of the next five years, we're going to try to do as much road resurfacing as we can, utilizing the resources that we have available to us, be it the gas tax, be it the grant money, or be it the sales tax program that we have currently available. So there was about $12 million in sales tax money that was set aside for road, citywide roadway improvements, which we are incorporating into various projects to help enhance that as well.
So to answer your question, yes, we will digitize that with the list that we publish. And we will target a quarter of the year when it's going to be in construction.
Okay, so just so that I'm, so that I understand, because engineers talk over my head, that's why I went to law school. You have a document, you have a document that will list out the jobs for current year. And then you have another document that will list out jobs future years. So that I can tell a constituent that there's a likelihood that your street will get addressed December 2023.
Sure. Yes, we can, we can make that happen.
Thank you.
And perhaps also, Commissioner, if you have a specific street that's been inquired about, you know, you could shoot a memo to administration and they could, you know, drill down even for that particular street. So you may not be able to answer it in that immediate form, but you could certainly promise to get back to them within, you know, 24, 48 hours. And we could get, I assume we could get them information about specific streets, if there are any plans, where those plans are, when the plans are, et cetera. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'd just like to qualify one thing, though, is as the project develops, so this is the challenge. We go in and we do subsurface investigations to evaluate the condition of utilities, drainage, all those sort of things. Oftentimes, things change during that period of time. So I want to caution everyone, if we start saying, hey, on this particular quarter, your road's going to get resurfaced. If it's part of another project, a bigger project, you know, that could, that could change. And so I think we need to qualify when we do these things, that this is based on the best information we have today. But, you know, the.
Yeah, but hopefully even as those changes crop up, we can get to the district commissioner and the resident and say, we thought it would be 2020, but because of X, Y, and Z, it'll now be 2023. The more communication, the better.
Absolutely, and that's why.
The more transparency, the better.
And that's why we need to keep it up to date.
Yes.
As they look at it, and then, you know, that's why I was saying that there needs to be probably associated with that some explanation so that they don't see, my road's going to be resurfaced in 2020, first quarter. And then all of a sudden, it doesn't happen. We need, we need some explanation of what's going on with the process.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Up to this point, if I may add, up to this point, this list that's being published right now have been communicated with Public Works and Public Utilities. So we're confident that this list would not need to be added to a different type of project. And this could be a standalone resurfacing project. That's why we're at this point today.
So a commissioner could go out to his constituents, his or her constituents, with this list at least, and have full confidence that that'll be happening within the next year?
Right. That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, Wen, thank you very much. Don't go far because it looks like you're next for the Banyan Boulevard improvements.
Yes, I'm, thank you so much. I'm actually going to introduce you to the project manager of Vladimir Geno.
Oh, okay.
He's going to be presenting on this, but I'll be right here.
Okay, I just had you, he had you on the agenda, okay. Vladimir, thank you, yes.
Good after, good morning commissioners and Mayor. And today, as Wen introduced, my name is Vladimir Geno. And I'm going to be talking to you on the Banyan Improvement Project that is planned for, that is being proposed right now. And the team members of, of that project is myself, also with the CIA Deputy Director Allison Justice. We have WGI, which is our project designer. And also with Whiting Turner, which is our CMA, our construction manager at WIS, which is planning on building this project, making it a reality. And today we'll talk about, some on the agenda is the overall project limit, as well as the proposed typical sections and the project goals, which we have to, safety and street scape. Allison will talk about that. And also the public outreach efforts that we have planned, that we're continuing, continuing to plan for this project, as well as the schedule and budget. And the overall project limit is from Australian Avenue to Flagler Drive, which is about 1.25 miles. So basically, we are targeting the entire Banyan Boulevard corridor. And why so? Well, the road is basically in deplorable condition, as we can see. Some, you know, pavement, some section missing, things like that. So when we first of all tried to project, make this project happen, we looked at resurfacing. And also, then we saw the opportunity that we can also upgrade some of the features on, on that road. So we talked with the CIA, which are trying to be funding this project to make it become a reality. And some of the typical section that we have, we see, we have sidewalk, bike lanes, which is a one-way cycle track elevated, that's, that's next to the sidewalk. We have planting, planting area, 20-foot of travel lane, which is 10 feet, two lanes in each direction, west and, and eastbound. And, and that goes on along to the, to the south side of, of the corridor. And that typical section will be from Australian all the way to Dixie. Then from Dixie to Flagler, we traverse into a shared lane. We have 7-18-foot sidewalk, 8-foot parking, 10-foot shared lane with a bike and automobile, as well as side, side, on the other side, on the south side, same thing. And Wen, I mentioned to you that this project is based on safety. And when we. And when we were looking at the design, we looked at the intersections, to how to make it safe for all users, bikes, pedestrian, also automobile. So we, we, we look at that, and that's how we come up with our, with our design. So some of the safety features that you will see on this project, we, we look at lighting. We will upgrade lighting throughout the corridor, AD accessibility, make it accessible for everyone. And also, we'll have traffic coming. The lanes right now are 12 feet. We are typically, the proposed plan is to reduce the lanes to 10 feet. And we have coordinated with all the stakeholders, Palm Beach County, Palm Tran, Federal Courthouse, the Georgia Show Palm Beach Courthouse. We have coordinated with them to make sure that those are feasible for them. And also, we're looking at signalization throughout the corridor. Some sec, some signalization will not be upgraded, but those that are important will, will be. And that's how we, we have targeted the project. And also, as mentioned, that we looked at the, we talked coordinate, in coordination with Palm Tran, with the transit, with the transit facility. So those are the overall safety component of this project. And Allison will give you an overall view on the street scape.
That's a good question.
Quick question from Madam President.
Thank you, just a quick question. I just want to make sure I understood, currently, the lanes there on all of Banyan are 12 feet? Or just in this section?
Mostly, the, the 12-foot lanes are from Australian all the way to Dixie.
Okay.
And, and then I think, for, for, east of that, I think we, it's a little bit, I think it's about 12-foot as well, but we, we will be...
And we're recommending 10 feet the whole entire way?
Correct, yes.
Yes, 10 feet from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. But as we designed this typical section, there's like two things that we are, were asked to look at. One is to preserve capacity at the intersection. So we, this is still a very important collector road for our city. So we want to make sure that we have enough vehicle capacity at that moment. The other thing that we're doing is like 20 feet, two 10-foot lanes, but we're leveraging the outside gutter. So it's essentially, because part of our design will allow us to use the gutter. So it's 11-foot on the outside, so that we could accommodate bus traffic along there.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Allison Justice. I would just want to talk a little bit about the CRA's involvement in this project again. As Vladimir mentioned, the city did have dollars in place for a road resurfacing project. The CRA had been talking for a couple of years, actually, on the connections from the historic northwest to downtown. Banyan is a, you know, is an important collector road, but it's also, it's kind of that, that visible boundary from downtown. And how do we make it so it's not such a, so it's not such a boundary, and it doesn't, it doesn't cut off the neighborhoods from each other? So when we started looking at this project, the CRA was interested in, in, in those connections. So really, Rosemary is an important intersection for, from coming from the historic northwest, also making it easy to cross. So as far as having the median is helpful, to give people refuge if we can. You know, the design overview has additional trees. Obviously, shade is, is important in the city, lighting, the cycle track. The cycle track was part of the bicycle master plan that the city implemented, as well as the mobility study. So this is not just a mobility project, it's, you know, it's, it's safety, it's mobility, it's a bike project as well. So it covers all of those, all of those items. So I think now we just have a few of the, a few of the photos. The intersections will be paver intersections. We do have the cycle track, again, that is painted across the, painted or colored pavers across the intersection to give a distinct crossing for pedestrians and for bicyclists. This is the intersection potentially at Rosemary, which will be, have an entire design of its own, again, to enhance that intersection, letting the vehicles know this is a place that you should be slowing down and, and, and paying attention here. Again, these are, these are some of the, the design features. We are maintaining the bus stops. We're working with Palm Tran on where potential future shelters will go there. Also, to help with some of the drainage, a rain garden is gonna be placed on the outside, on the curb line in, in certain areas, to help with some of the, some of the drainage challenges along Banyan. And again, here's just some, some overview, some renderings of, of what it could, will potentially look like. Is that all we have here? That's the intersection of Tamarind and Banyan. There's a couple of things to note. We are preserving the black olive trees that are on Banyan between, they're mainly between Sappidilla and Tamarind. And they are on the outside of the sidewalk. So typical section will be a little bit different, because we like to put the trees towards the road, because it helps protect the pedestrians, it helps slow the traffic as well. And here, they will be at the backs of the curbs, and we do, there is shade already there. We do want to maintain what we, what we have there. So some of the typical sections will look a little bit different as we go from Tamarind to Sappidilla, and then from Sappidilla on.
And also, one thing to mention about the, the trees is that we are installing soil cells to actually, when the tree grows, that they have space, not uplifting our sidewalk that we currently face right now. And now, about the stakeholders and outreach that we have done, we've talked to FEC, SFRTA, Palm Tran, Palm Beach County, the federal, the federal courthouse, and One Parking, Palm Beach County and PBSO offices, Connect, WPB. We also, also had a public outreach meeting for, for the, for all to know about this project. And also, we still have upcoming outreach that is planned for this project, with the Northwest, with the DDA, the merchant meeting, and even, which will be our next step after having these meetings, is to come to the face of the city for approval of, of this project. And this is our anticipated schedule and budget. So our initial budget for this project from Whiting Turner came at 20 million. And we are planning to have the plans completed by the end of our next month. The, and then before we start construction in January, we'll have a public outreach meeting again, so that, that will be a pre-construction meeting for all the merchant and, and stakeholders of this project. And we intend to start this project in March 2020. And right now, we have a two-year schedule for this project, so that will be completed by, we anticipate it to be completed by March 2022. And on this slide, you'll see we have a, an information line, which we hired Veronica Cooper, from Cooper Construction, to be our public outreach agent. And this is the line that we've given to anyone who needs information on this project. And also, we'll work on, on our website in making sure that, that is accessible also on our website.
Okay, so it's a $20 million project. What's the source of the funding?
That is from the bond project from the CIA. We currently have 15 and a half million.
Okay, okay.
About three years ago, just to add to that, we, how this project originated was it was identified as purely a resurfacing project out of the $40 million bond. So 1, 1.1 million out of that bond was dedicated towards this project. Obviously, we spent up to that amount already in design fees and excavations and exploration as part of this project. So it's gonna be joint funding, and we're looking towards the CRA bond, bond to make this project whole.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? Okay, very good. We, I would say we look forward to Banyan being closed, but we don't look forward to... This is gonna be interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have anything on the Mayor's Matters, so, I mean, yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a few public comments, because I know that there was a special meeting that was called on Friday, and subsequently, there was also an article in the paper, you know, just highlighting that three Commissioners, and I was one of the three who couldn't attend. And, you know, I just want to say publicly, I attend almost every meeting possible, whether that be agenda review, commission workshops, commission meetings. And that, that was just a very short notice, and unfortunately, my schedule would not permit me to attend. In the meantime, I have communicated with our city administrator, Jeff Green. I'm not sure if he's communicated with you, Mayor. But I would like to see if we can schedule a workshop or a work session, or at the next commission meeting, some time to discuss our bid process and, and moving forward, and making sure that we're doing these process in a fair and transparent way, and, and to have some further discussion on that.
Further discussion on the actual decision or on the process going forward?
I, I think we need to have it on both.
Okay. I mean, it's fine, we, we can certainly discuss it, and then we'll schedule something.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had some comments along the same lines, but mostly, you know, this is something that commissioneering had brought up during an agenda review too, and that is how we report our attendance policy. So just for the public's recognition, what typically happens with this or any meeting is that the commission office gets ahold of us, checks our schedules, and we come up with a meeting date that works. There's a calendar invite, and we each accept or decline that calendar invite. The meeting that occurred on Friday was a special meeting, not called by administration, but called by two Commissioners. So that meeting was scheduled. Personally, I subsequently declined that, let the commission office know at that time, and three times after that, that I would not be able to attend that meeting, because I'm 100% dedicated to the citizens of West Palm Beach, and I'm 100% dedicated to the job that I hold outside of here. And sometimes, those, those two conflict. And so, you know, I think the article in the Palm Beach Post was inaccurate in that I was not a no-show, and I will speak only for myself in this instance, that I declined that on several different occasions. And look, every Commissioner sitting on this dais will tell you, they've missed a meeting. We all have things that, that come up. And so I just want to make sure that if there's an instance like that that happens again, where we have already reported that we will not be in attendance at a meeting, perhaps there's a way at the beginning of meetings to roll call, et cetera, because I think it's disingenuous to the public. And understandably, I had some very upset citizens that I was addressing on weekends, letting them know, you know, where I was on, on that particular meeting. And, you know, I, I think it, it brought on some, some serious questions from the public, which I think could be answered if there were just a policy. And I don't know if that's a discussion that we want to have in a workshop as to how it's best to make sure that everyone, staff, the public, et cetera, know where we're, we're going to be as, as occurs in, in public meetings. And again, to official business, even today, as we sat down, you know, trying to, to see who, who was in attendance, who wasn't in attendance, and understanding that there are, are conflicts that occur there. But, you know, I think at any given time, I can look at my calendar and see who has accepted and declined any, any meeting on that given day. And, you know, I, I understand that wasn't disclosed at Friday's meeting, which made the, the problem occur subsequent to that. So to the extent that we can protect any Commissioner on this dais going forward from having to undergo that same scrutiny, I would welcome that conversation.
That's fine. You know, I certainly am not, yeah, it was, it was an unique situation, because a meeting was not called by, by me, it was not called by administration, it was called by two Commissioners pursuant to our charter. And, and I don't know what information went into, what, what process went into the scheduling of the meeting at that time. I just got the word that there was a special meeting scheduled, so I, I don't know what information, what the process was for figuring out whether that time was more convenient than any other time. But we could certainly talk about that at, at a future meeting. Anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.